Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are commission-appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note, the governing body rules state that public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month, agendas can be found at topeka.org. Amanda, will you please take the role?
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Herron.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Cow.
Here.
Mr. Hager.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Tobobin.
Here.
Ms. Hannan.
Here.
We have enough for our quorum.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from April 15, 2024? Any comments or questions? Yes, well?
I would move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Amanda?
Ms. Hannan.
Yes. Aye.
Mr. Tobobin.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Hager.
Aye.
Mr. Cow.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Herron.
Aye.
Mr. Dean.
Aye.
Minutes passed.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed with tonight's cases. The first two action items, we will take as one, like we did last month, consider them both together. And this is also a reminder that we had a public hearing last month, and I closed that at that time, so we'll be reconsidering only new things presented based on the questions we had last time. So, Bryson, will you please start?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Okay, so this is the annexation for the property just west of Research Fine Foods. So the subject property is 41.7 acres. This is a unilateral annexation, so the property owner has consented and the governing body needs to approve this annexation. It is contiguous with the city as well. It's just north of Sixth Avenue and just west of Research's existing facility. Again, this is 41.7 acres, and it's located at 3600 Southeast Sixth Avenue and 3620 Southeast Sixth Avenue. In the Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040, this was identified as Tier 3. Again, it needs to graduate to move into Tier 2 to be annexed. Services are already available. There's water and sewer already along Sixth Avenue, so this is graduated into Tier 2. Byron Police did not have any additional costs, and there were no additional costs from streets, as this is, the street itself has already been annexed by the city. Again, this is a concept plan. I'm sure there will be some more discussion on this, but again, we're looking at kind of the left side of this screen for 255 stalls in Phase 1 and 150 in that next. And with that, planning staff recommends that this annexation is consistent with the Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040, and I would take any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next one.
All right, so we're going to be reviewing the proposal to amend the master plan, the PUD master plan. It was essentially a rezoning proposal. So at the April 15 meeting, as you said, Madam Chair, Planning Commission voted to continue this to this date, and as part of that motion, it was asked that the PUD master plan be revised to include an explicit requirement that landscape setbacks be maintained as a pervious surface and not allow other uses that, like parking or buildings in that landscape setback area, and to require the addition of any buildings be approved only by an amendment to the PUD master plan on Area 2 of the master plan. So we've passed out the revised, the most recent version of the master plan, and this full size was not in your packet, and so we wanted to print that out for you today to read that. And if you look at the second page, the second sheet on this, on the left under general notes, this addition requires, this additional note on here, this general sentence, requires that any principal or accessory buildings being added to Area 2 will require an amendment of some kind. That could be a minor amendment. If it's a minor, it qualifies as a minor. It could be a major amendment. Major amendment means it comes back to the Planning Commission and governing body for approval. And there are rules for that, and that's in Section 18.190.070, referenced in that note. The second one is Note 6, under landscaping and fencing notes, that states that all landscape setbacks required by this master plan shall be maintained as a pervious surface and be devoid of parking and storage areas, hard surfaces, and structures. So in addition to that, the commission directed the applicant staff to provide information regarding the environmental impact of relocating the stream and the stream buffer, the heat island effect of the storage area, the parking area, the volume of trucks entering and leaving the site, improvements at the northeast corner of the existing site, the noise study that was completed by the applicant, that was completed after April 15, within that same week, I believe, and also the possibility of increase in the height of the berm along the west boundary. So I'm going to review kind of the material just so you can be reminded of some of the details and the facts concerning this. So this amended PUD will allow a trailer storage and staging lot for 405 semi-trailer stalls in combination with Research Fine Foods. 255 stalls would be in the initial phase, 150 stalls would be in the next phase. And part of this requires, or part of this will be the relocation of the stream channel about 200 to 400 feet to the east. That shows you the area of the site, and that's for Area 2, and it shows you the stream channel and buffer that run through the site. I'm going to skip that. So that's the same map, shows you surrounding zoning, includes mixed uses. And a lot of those commercial uses in that area preceded Research. So this addresses the Land Use and Growth Management Plan, the comprehensive plan, and the city adopted an amendment to the master plan to accommodate the earlier phase of Research and identified this area as a mixed-use employment corridor. So key master plan conditions. There are large setbacks on the west and north property boundaries, preservation of many of the existing mature trees along the west and southwest corner of the site, the combination of berms and fencing to mitigate noise from semi-tractor treaders, and noise limited to 60 decibels along west and north property boundaries. So the other thing that was included in this were some limits on signage to accommodate directional-type signage, but limit the height in some of the areas so it's not as high as what's normally permitted under industrial zoning. So this gives you an example of what this looks like in terms of the depths of the lots that front on Rice Road, and that 100-foot arrow there, that is the distance of the setback shown on the master plan, but just to be clear, if there's an alteration to the master plan, what is proposed and what staff's recommending is that there be some flexibility that allows them to go as close to 60. 60 is still pretty large for a setback, much larger than what's typically required for a setback. So just some noise level comparisons, because we're going to be thrown out these noise levels. 90 decibels for a lawnmower, normal conversation is at 60 decibels. Should point out that a refrigerated trailer at the source is 74 decibels. That's at the source, if you're standing right next to it. Okay, so I'm going to address some of these items that you asked more information about at the previous meeting. So the environmental impact of relocating a stream and a stream buffer. The relocation of stream buffer will require approval from the Topeka Utilities Department. They will review that as part of their review of the stormwater management plan. So when the applicant submits an application for a subdivision plat, which will be required, they will submit the stormwater management plan, and it will be reviewed for that time, at that time, excuse me. At that time, it'll be reviewed for how to achieve floodway protection, stream bank stabilization, erosion control, removal of sediments from the stream, stormwater infiltration, prevention of pollutants entering waterways, creation and preservation of riparian habitat, and protection from flooding. So the heat island, an urban heat island, excuse me, an urban heat island occurs when there are higher temperatures in developed areas compared to undeveloped areas in the same general area. So increases in hard surfaces like parking lots, decreases in landscaping, those can create urban heat islands, especially if they're dense. An urban heat island is usually talked about in the context of a community or a city and not one particular land use, although it could be. So what is not known is if the city requires, say, landscaping within a parking lot, how that affects properties immediately surrounding it. That's not entirely clear. In this particular example, this parking lot does not occupy all of the site. The coverage, I noted in the staff report, but it's probably less than half of the site, so there's a lot of green surface that's left. Also, the master plan requires that the mature trees along the west and southeast corner, the southwest corner of the site, rather, be preserved. Okay, the volume of trucks entering and leaving the site. Since the April 15 meeting, the applicants provided us with more information, and what they've stated is 10 to 15 trucks exit the site using the northernmost driveway on Croco Road. Also, Research intends to correct a lot of the truck traffic by working with their carrier partners and adding signage to the exit on the Croco to direct truck traffic south on Croco to access the highway interstate system by way of Sixth Avenue. So I was out at the site recently. I don't think these were there a few weeks ago, but I noticed signs, I think it was yesterday, I noticed signs that state that semi-tractors should not use that entrance. So I think that's a change. I don't think that was there before. Improvements to the northeast corner of the existing site. So at the May 20 meeting, planning staff recommended that there be a condition that requires some additional landscaping or fencing along the berm that's north of the driveway, north of the northernmost driveway on Croco Road. The applicant has agreed to that, so that is a condition that is not something you add as a note to the site, or excuse me, note to the master plan. That is something that it'll be documented somewhere and implemented outside of the master plan, and there's a reason for that. So it's our recommendation that that additional landscaping be installed before the end of this growing season, 2024 growing season. And I think, I believe the applicant is comfortable with that. Okay, so. Okay, good. Before I talk about this, the noise study, so the applicant conducted a noise study. It was done by a consultant. It's very technical. There are terms used like weighted and unweighted noise levels. It generally concludes that the noise levels that are perceptible by humans are below 60 decibels. I don't entirely understand all the aspects of the noise study, so if there are specific questions about the noise study, the applicant is here to explain that. One thing to keep in mind about the noise study, so the noise study was conducted on the existing site. The measurements were taken at the northeast corner of the existing site, so it doesn't really directly address the noise that will be generated by the expansion in the storage area to the west. However, the noise levels that are created on site come primarily from idling or trucks that are resting and waiting to load or unload at the site. And so those are the similar, that's going to be the primary noise generator on the west end of the site where Area 2 is. One thing I want to mention is that property owner across the street, Sandra Campisi, who's here tonight and who has testified in these hearings, previous hearing, she invited me to visit her site, visit her property, and witness for myself the noise levels at the site, and I did do that. You can hear the truck traffic, or the trucks, on the site from her house and in front of her entrance to her home. Her home sits kind of at a high level, and I think that's why the noise is heard from that location. You can also hear a lot of other noises. You can hear a lot of truck noise on the street. You can hear the rail, there's a rail line to the north, and that's a loud noise. There is a lot of loud ambient noise, so I just wanted to disclose that. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the berm, and I'll do my best to explain this, but really, Kevin Holland, representing the applicant, he's going to speak to this as well. So this was the slide and the diagram, the exhibit that was presented to you at the previous meeting. So if you can look at this cross-section and look on the left side, that's the west side of the property, and you can see where the property line is, and this is the north cross-section. So it's around the middle of the parking area. That's about where it's at, middle to the, a little further north of the middle. But you can see the distance between the truck, where the trucks would park, and the property line. You can see the berm. The berm is about three feet from the base of the berm. In this case, the berm is on the far edge of, the west edge of the site, and then there's an opaque fence on top of the berm. Okay, so this is a revised exhibit that was submitted to us last week, and we hadn't seen it at the time we completed the staff report, but we knew that this was coming, and they explained it to us. So in this case, the berm is a bigger berm, but it's further to the east. It's closer to the truck parking area. It still has a six-foot opaque fence on top of it. By opaque, I mean that you can't see through it. It blocks, it's a visual barrier. Whether it's a sound barrier, that's somewhat questionable. The berm itself is probably a more effective sound barrier than the fence, although a lot of things can affect that sound. My understanding is that vegetation can absorb sound, especially if it is during the season when there are leaves on the trees and that type of thing. So what they have told me is that this berm, as shown in this diagram, is higher, is taller than the previous one. It's hard to visualize by looking at the exhibit, and maybe Kevin Holland can explain this a bit, but that's what I've been told. So this is the south cross-section, and this is what was presented at the previous meeting, and this does something very similar. So this is like the previous one, the berm is higher and it's closer to the parking area. So that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer questions if you have any. I'll do my best to answer those. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Cow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, just one question before the applicant comes up, applicant's representative. On the last issue you're talking about, you're understanding, I hear you correctly, that the fencing, the opaque fencing, which I thought was just for screening purposes, that it might have a noise suppression value as well?
I don't know the answer to that, honestly. I would suspect it does, just intuitively, I think it probably does, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mike.
Are there any other questions? Will the applicant please come forward?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and Kevin Holland could find struggle to talk on these issues. Just to clarify on that berm, because the problem is, is that can be a little confusing. There's the easier one to look at, and Mike and I talked about this. I think there's a better way to do this, but I wanted to show worst-case scenario or best-case scenario, whichever way you're looking from. This one pushes it closer to the vehicles, which has some residual effect, but we also put it four to one so that you could actually mow and maintain that area. I thought it might be actually a little more advantageous to push it back. We can't go all the, I want to keep away from the tree line, and I don't want to fill on top of the drip line or anything like that so that we don't kill any of those trees, but pushing it back towards the tree line and going up at more like a two-to-one slope, which is not maintainable with a mower or anything like that, but it's an area that probably won't be visualized a lot. That way, we get a little elevation, because now we're up on the higher slope, and we go up faster, we get the top of the fence, basically it's a fence flat, and then back down, which, so if the existing slope's like that, instead of building the berm down here at six foot, we build the berm up here at six foot, which actually increases that overall height and can probably help out a little bit more. In terms of the fence, there's different fencing materials, and Research is dedicated to meet that 60-decibel threshold at property line, and so there will be a lot of testing measurements during construction to make sure that is met. If I can answer anything else.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Brooks?
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Holland. So I'm just curious, unweighted versus weighted decibel levels? Because just so I'm asking the question, one of those is more than 60, so.
Correct.
Can you help us understand why?
And what it is, and I am not an acoustical engineer, but we communicated with that to be able to get to that. So one of them is the DBA, is the decibel level that we reference. If, to say, the chiefs, when we go to a crowd and we're the loudest crowd ever, that's measured on a DBA level. The unweighted, that's the noise attributed specifically to the crowd and to where you are locally. The unweighted has the traffic in the background if someone's mowing over here. There's other noises attributed to that as well, and that's the DBZ, which is a higher, but the decibel level that everybody recognizes as the standard to listen to is the DBA. So in terms of what our acoustical engineer said at that location on the northeast corner, which the trucks are actually going to be a very similar location, although we won't have the height berm, I'm pretty confident our noise levels are going to be better on the west area, just because of the distance to the property line with the berm and with the fences well. But, and that DBA angle is, that's, so if you're ever using an app, make sure which level you're on is, and that's one of those things, because I know that's probably going to come up at one point, and I believe Mike had a DBZ app that was cranking the unweighted higher levels, and then when you turn it into the DBA, which is the decibel level, unweighted, it lowers it down to the actual decibel that you're hearing. Is that, I tried to do as well as I could from a non-acoustical engineer standpoint.
Commissioner Cow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin, your consultant was looking at existing conditions. Does the consultant know what the magnitude of the expansion, the number of trucks and stalls?
He was hired specifically for this location for a test of that location, so not necessarily. He was hired to see if we had an issue on Croco, so we wanted to position him in that location, which is pretty close to the reefer trucks sitting there. The reefers are on, waiting to come in, load or unload, and those reefers run as well. So we wanted a similar location and a similar situation that we would have, and so that he was a little closer probably to the reefers than we would be on the west property line, but the test was probably as close as we could get to something that would.
And your consultant was pretty definite in terms of the existing conditions.
Correct.
What you heard at the public hearing and the Planning Commission discussion last month was concerns about what the future holds once you build out, and your consultant notes that if there is going to be an expansion in the future, and if levels exceed 85 decibels, then they could offer mitigation.
Eighty-five.
They're making that offer, but you understand the dilemma that we're with in terms of the limited mechanisms that the city has. You know, I would hope that there's not going to be a noise problem when you build out, okay? That's the best case, but if there is, really the only enforcement mechanism the city has outside of this process here is determining there's a violation of an ordinance.
Are we, and I'm sorry, sir, are we talking about the west buildout of the parking?
Yes, right.
So the things that are still available to be able to do is, I think Madam Chairwoman spoke about a fence as being a barrier versus a sound barrier, and I think we can add some of those features to mitigate noise on the west side of that fence.
No, and I appreciate that, and this is a what-if. I mean, you have all the higher berm, the fencing, but you still exceed the 85 threshold, or the problem here is with the city ordinance, it doesn't have a decibel measure. It's rather a little bit of a subjective analysis, a little bit of vagueness perhaps in the ordinance, but at most, I suppose it's a, maybe it's a civil offense or maybe a misdemeanor to violate, and that's not the situation what I'd be in.
Right.
So what I'm leading to, Madam Chair, maybe when we get into commission discussion about it, is whether there's anything in the master plan that could address the potential for future problems, meaning a higher decibel reading than even what your consultant's talking about, the 85. You'd take that as a goal or as a maximum.
Unweighted, yeah.
You know, the master plan or the plat notes could be written in a way that you would trigger some, require you to take some mitigating, further mitigation steps in order to drop it below that 85, or I suppose the alternative, which is a little more draconian, is to reduce the number of trucks and stalls that could be operated at that location.
I was going to say, and I got to ask legal and city, if I'm not mistaken, we had a case where if we were in violation, they could order a cease and desist activities on that site, if I'm not mistaken, a previous very fun case that we had.
So I think that case was, I believe there were some conditions built into it. Wasn't so much noise, wasn't specific to noise. Just to be clear, if there's a violation of something on the master plan, it's like violating a zoning code. violating a zoning code, zoning ordinance. The only difference is that if, well, let me kind of back up here. So, if there's a violation of something on the master plan, then we would take zoning enforcement action, we would take the steps to enforce that. They'd either come into compliance, they could also come back and apply for a, an amendment to change the standards, that would go through this process. Especially, certainly about noise, you know, the noise is central for this, so if some, if there's an issue about noise, and the applicant's way of addressing that is through an amendment, that would have to go back to you and go back to the governing body. That's not something we, would be approved by minor amendment. So, that's the remedy, if there's a violation of what's in the master plan. Keep in mind, there's a note on the master plan that limits the decibel level to 60 decibels or less at the boundary, and that's always been understood to mean that first figure, not the second figure.
So, what would trigger that process? Would it be staff coming out and measuring? Would it be the applicant saying, hey, we think our noise levels are too loud? How is that process initiated?
I think it would be initiated by complaint, probably. And also, there is something in there that, that says that staff will be allowed to go onto the site to measure. If we did that, I think the problem is, if we did that, we'd want to have someone that knew what they were doing. I don't think, I'm not comfortable just using an app on a phone, doing that.
Thank you.
Can I offer up a little more?
Yes.
Ma'am? And I think, just to add to it, because we've been through it on an, on an unpleasurable past project several years ago, but we went through the PUD process, and, and a violation was had, and they received a letter saying, you have 30 days to fix the, the issue, or triggers exactly what he's talking about, and it's one of those, either you stop doing business, or you fix the issue very quickly. So, I think the city has a pretty good control measure, since it's listed on the PUD.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cott?
No, I just, you know, the, the noise was not my issue last round, but other, other commissioners spoke to that, and we did take, get public testimony on it. I just, I go back and read through the city's ordinance, and, not trying to beat up on the city, but that noise ordinances are really tough, they don't have a decibel attached to them. It's extremely tough to prosecute.
Except this one technically does have a noise ordinance attached to the PUD. So, it, it does have a little more far-reaching plan than, than a typical PUD would.
Yeah, but, ma'am chair, again, getting a discussion, again, the noise was not my issue, but if people are satisfied that, if there's a determination of violation of the Tepica noise ordinance at any point in time during the build-out or following build-out, then the city could, that the violation, the violation of the noise ordinance triggers or has consequences for the master plan, and you guys are under the gun at that point, that you need to come into compliance.
Yes.
Or need to cease violation of the ordinance by one means or another.
And if I can clarify, if you recall, the, the property slopes significantly, and we dig into it about halfway, about 40% into it, and so I believe the language is in there that a berm and fence is put up so it's, so it, so it is a minimum of, I believe, 12-foot high, six-foot berm, six-foot fence. Once you get past it, there will still be a fence, but the berm goes away because the property is, gets to be 14, 15 foot above, above the parking lot. Is that accurate, Mr. Holland?
Would you repeat that?
So, we have the berm, but the berm extends back about 40%, but at that point, then it flips up to natural earth being already 11-foot higher than the existing parking lots, and then we put the fence on top of the, on top of that, so that the minimum exposed, I would say, above the fence is 12-foot, which would cover the trucks and all.
Yeah, so, Commissioners, we had a conversation when we got these, those first cross-sections before the previous meeting, about the depth of, or the, the height of the berm relative to the parking area, and it does, because of the slope of the land and as much excavation as they're doing, that does increase as you go north from kind of that midpoint. I don't know exactly what it is, but.
About 40%. So, it's, what, I didn't want to say we're going to be 12, 14 foot near, and then have another six foot on top of berm on that, because the, we're already cutting back, which means it's a natural berm, and the houses are already quite a bit higher. So, I just wanted to clarify that, so that, once it gets built and, and that berm doesn't look consistent throughout, it's because there's a natural berm or elevation hike on, on those back properties that are already significantly higher than, than the adjacent properties east.
All right.
Kevin, in case you, in case you're not back in front of us again on this matter, I wanted to thank you, your, your client, for, for, for accepting the recommendation of the, or the request that the setbacks be a vegetative cover, and that there be no structures added to the property without an amendment to the master plan. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. I will pass it on to the client.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Now, we will, again, a reminder, we are not having a public hearing on this. I had one last month, so we will move on to discussion by Commissioners, and, yeah. Commissioner Brooks?
So, I'm just curious about, in the PUD general note nine, it talks about the decibel level at 60 decibels, and it only references the west and north property lines, which I know, you know, those are the ones that are kind of in contention, or we're talking about, because that's where the expansion's heading. But if the east property line is a known issue also, is, would it make sense to add east to that?
So, I was of the understanding it addressed that, and, so if you look at note 12, so note 12 is a carryover, I believe, from the previous master plan, the master plan that's already.
Okay.
And it might be less confusing if those were combined into a single note, but, and that might be a better way to do that, but, but it, it does address that around the entire property. So, at the time that was done, I remember this happens, we were thinking about the east property line and the north and, and south on the first phase, the first two phases.
Okay. Yeah, that, I didn't see the 12, that makes sense. So, would it be fair to say if the property owners to the east have a noise complaint issue, they could go through the means we just talked about currently? Because it says 60 decibels within five feet of the property line?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
Mike, on this northeast corner of the existing site, this, do you like this visual screen, a height of six foot, is that upon maturity of the plantings, or is that a maximum, the six foot?
That is a, that's not a maximum. I, I wasn't, I drafted that condition, I wasn't thinking about that aspect of it. I think that they can plant types of plants that will, that will meet that at the time of planting, and that's what I was thinking.
So, it's a six foot's a minimum, if, and there's, if there's no traffic, if there's no visual obstruction to traffic, then it could be a 20-foot screen, right?
Sure. And I think it's, it could be, the six feet is measured from the height of the plants down to the bottom of the berm, and there is a berm there. I don't know how high that is, it's probably a couple of feet. So, keep in mind, just to, to be clear, as far as the Ms. Campisi who lives across the street, there's a driveway right there, and there's no way to really block that driveway.
Right, right.
So, you're not going to be able to block noise with that, those plantings, but it will at least address the issue of being able to see all the trucks.
And not everybody going into that driveway is going to be in a truck, you know, sitting there 12 feet high, right?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
But, at the end of that driveway, even if it's not blocked, like we just discussed, it will have to be down at the end of the research driveway, not the residential one across the street. It will have to be down to 60 decibels.
Yes. That's what the standard's intended to mean, is 60 decibels. And it's, it's noise that's generated by researchers.
Correct.
If you go out to the site, there are all kinds of noises during the day. The issue with, I don't know if that's the issue, but the, the fact about the noise generated by researchers is it tends to be constant, it's just a constant hum. Occasionally, you might hear something a little louder than that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion? No? Seeing none, I call for a motion.
Commissioners, can we make sure to separate the motions for the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The two action items?
You are correct. For the annexation.
Madam Chair, also, if I could, I'm sorry. Just to, just to remind you all that if you are being, if you want to be specific about the berm, that'll have to be a condition in your motion, and then that can be written to reflect what your wishes are in the master plan.
Do you recommend being specific? I had that thought while we were talking earlier about.
Yeah.
Just, I think the discussion we had was good about accountability, and, and I like that, and so, I like where the berm is headed, but I also understand in design, it's still early, it could change, so how do you make sure that this concept is what it is, it becomes, or it's better, but it's no less than? And so, I don't know how to communicate that. I, there's a general, there's some amount of trust that we have to have, as, you know, it was presented here, it's all televised, it's all documented somehow, but, but I do agree that the berm, the direction the berm went is better, and so if we need to, but I also don't want to handcuff the, the designers to say it has to be this, when they may come up with a better solution.
So, in the staff report, so in the staff report, and it should be incorporated in the master plan, there's a height minimum, height of the berm in relation to the surface of the parking lot.
Okay.
Because where, where it gets confusing is if you're saying at the base, the height is measured from the base of the berm, where's the base of the berm, and that kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess I want to.
I will look for that. I believe it said that 10 feet was a measure.
Yeah, that was the number I remember.
It's right there, it's shown on the, it's actually shown on the, the cross-section. 10 feet from the surface of the parking lot to the height of the fence.
So, I, I want clarification too, is it this berm that is currently in the PUD, or is it the first one that's currently in the PUD? Which one are we voting on? Just to clarify.
Excuse me?
Just to clarify, which one are we voting on? The one up on the screen right now, or the original one?
Well, I, you, I think you need to decide what you prefer, or if you have an alternative to that.
What is in the PUD right now?
So, right now, it should be in the PUD master plan, we can make sure it is, but if you look in the staff report, it's on page 11 of the staff report, and it should be in number four. There's a fairly specific condition. Yeah, that's been moved around a lot. Okay. Okay, if you look at, on the master plan and in the staff report, it's note number four, under landscaping and fencing notes. So, what this says, it's condition 14 in the master, in the staff report, says, "Under landscaping and fencing notes, to mitigate noise from the truck and trailer park, we provide combination of a landscaping, a landscape berm and opaque fence along the southwest and north boundary adjacent to the truck trailer parking area, where the site abuts land zone or used for residential land use. Combination of berm and opaque fence shall obtain a minimum height of eight feet above finished grade of the truck trailer parking and storage area located..." Located at the, at the south, it's at the south end, it's supposed to be at the south end. Something missing there. South end, that's right, south end, and gradually deep, okay, and 10 feet at the north location. And in the slide, so if you can see that, this isn't very specific about where the, where the location is, but the intent is, I can tell you where the south location, south cross-section is, and, and Mr. Holland might need to explain where the north cross-section is specifically, but if you look at where those truck parking stalls are lined up along the west edge of the bound, of the parking area, the south end of those stalls is where that, that was the intention behind that, to be a minimum of eight feet. I think what Kevin was saying is that there might be, with his revised exhibit, it goes a little higher than that, I believe. Is that right?
Can I help?
Yeah.
I can probably help this, so that, that eight and 10 foot was the previous situation, which was a three-foot berm and a six-foot fence. Now, we have a six-foot berm and a six-foot fence, so just call for a minimum of 12-foot from the top of fence down to the edge of pavement, and it probably satisfies all conditions.
All right. So, I understand you, and that is what is currently in the PD, PUD we're getting ready to vote on, is last design?
So, if you want to incorporate the 12-foot height, that's something that you would have to include in your motion.
Okay. And that's 12 feet, Kevin?
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, from top of fence to top of pavement edge.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion on the annexation proposal?
With, with that, with Commissioners Brooks' suggestion in terms of height of the berm.
Just, just on the annexation.
Oh, on the annexation. Oh, my God, we dig, dig our ass really quickly. Okay, yeah, let's try the annexation first. Yes. My cow.
Off of the motion that the planning commission has determined that the annexation of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All right. Amanda, can you take the vote?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Haron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
And the annexation passes.
All right. Is there any more discussion on the PUD itself? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the PUD with the adjustment of a 12-foot height from the pavement top of fence.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Amanda, please take the roll.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager? Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
The PUD passes with the adjustment of the fence.
All right. Thank you again to the applicant. And let's move on to the next item. The next case is A 2403, annexation of the Sports Center. Bryson, can you please?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have another unilateral annexation. This is contiguous to the city on almost completely four sides. There's a little bit on the south. South. Southwest, that is not part of, that is not contiguous with the city. The property owner has consented to annexation as well, and this will require governing body approval. There are two properties as part of this annexation. The first is a single-family home, and the second is a outdoor recreation facility. In land use and growth management, this is just under 58 acres, 57.9, that would be annexed. And these are located just south of Southwest 10th Avenue at 6545 Southwest 10th and 6549 Southwest 10th. In the land use and growth management plan, this was also identified as tier three, again, needing graduation to tier two prior to annexation. There is currently water that runs along Southwest 10th, and then sewer that runs along Southwest 10th, as well as the east side of the property as well. So this has been determined to be graduated to tier two. So with there already being water and sewers, there is no additional cost to those utility providers. Streets already maintain this part of the property, or part of the road itself. There will be a little additional maintenance cost with that, but generally, we already maintain this segment. And we have a concept here. So this is improvements to an existing golf driving range with multi-tier hitting mats. There will be a plat and a amendment to the conditional use permit that will be approved administratively following the annexation of this property. And city staff recommend that this annexation is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I would take any questions about it.
Are there any questions for staff by the commissioners?
For the most part, seems like there's no additional cost to the city for this. I did notice that there was additional cost to forestry, and it said that if there were a number of annexations of this kind, that that would be potentially cumbersome. Doesn't have to be extensive, but I'm just curious, like, what kind of costs, or what impact is on forestry by something like this?
So generally, what forestry is looking at are trees or vegetation that's in the right-of-way, or something they would be responsible for. There's very minimal, I actually don't, I may be not right on this, but I've driven this area a few times. I don't recognize that there are any significant trees that would require regular maintenance, or something along those lines. When we talk to forestry, they're looking for, if there is a large subdivision that is going to be a lot of right-of-way, where there may be street trees, that's where they're going to have some larger concerns with the costs associated with that.
And that would be, in this case, we would be focused on the length of the right-of-way along Sixth, not anywhere else?
Correct. Tenth is the primary concern here.
Oh, tenth, sorry.
No, no worries. I'm a little unclear as far as the 470 and who maintains that, but there's, the majority of the trees that we're looking at on this aerial are located on the private property itself, so that would be the property owner's responsibility.
Thanks.
Commissioner Cow?
Bryson, one thing, in the staff report on page three, at the top of page three, there's a reference to the tax revenue that Mission Township receives off its property, and then it says what it would get under a build-out. But I, my suggestion would be to just to delete that sentence. I think it's a little misleading that a person might read that and think that that is going to go to the township, and township levy doesn't apply once the property is annexed into the city.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, it's the, oh, right there.
All right. No one out there. Let's see, there's no public testimony for this one. There's no one here. Do I need to open a public meeting? All right. Is there any discussion by commissioners? Yes?
You know, I'll offer a motion that the planning commission has determined that the property is consistent with, or the annexation of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Amanda, please take the roll.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Annexation passes.
All right. Next, we'll hear from Dan, related to the CIP, Proposed Capital Improvement Program.
Commissioners, a little bit of housekeeping for this one. So in a typical process, we would have brought this to you before the governing body acted on the CIP. But for whatever reason, there's, you know, staff turnover and different things going on. We didn't do that this time, so the CIP was approved by the governing body. But as was pointed out at the meeting, the governing body meeting, it's really a living document. It's going to get amended at some point. It's going to get changed this year. It's going to happen. Things will change, and it's not really done, is my point. So we're maybe just a little bit behind here, but we're going to do our part to make a determination about the comp plan, and just at least take care of that step. So that's what I'm going to do here. So I'll go over this. You know, if you've been on the commission for a while, you've seen this every year. We do a similar thing. We might think about a way to change it, so maybe it's a little easier to get through it. But, so your role here is really to review the CIP to ensure it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we provide a list of projects within the document, within the packets. And so we highlight the projects on the spreadsheet, and then we include project sheets for the projects that we've highlighted. So if it's a highlighted project, there's a project sheet that should be in the same order as it is on the spreadsheet. We're not going to go over all of those, I'm just going to highlight a few of them. So first up here is a project on Lyman Road. This is a new sidewalk for, on Lyman Road from Bale to Tyler. This is an interesting project. This sidewalk's going to happen before the street gets done, and really, probably because it's a little harder of a project, they have to deal with the Union Pacific Railroad in this case. So they're getting a head start on that sidewalk and getting that done, so that's, that's interesting. The next thing here is Polquency Viaduct East. So I think everybody knows that the west portion of the Polquency Viaduct is almost underway. So what's happened so far is right-of-way acquisition, there's been demolition. The utility work, I believe, is finished. So at some point here, that, there's going to be some major construction going on along there. What this CIP item is acknowledging that, at some point in the future, there's going to be a project for the east side of that viaduct. So this is the project sheet for that. And this would be essentially from Indiana to over to, the bridges over Adams Street and Shunker Creek. So this is a little farther out, we're talking about 2028. And I think there's still a step here involved where the state has to select this project. But anyway, they're planning for it within the CIP. And then finally, we have this line item that's been in here for quite a long time. It's the 20, in this case, it's the 2025 citywide infill sidewalk. So this program builds new sidewalks, restores existing ones, aligns with the pedestrian master plan, and also with public requests. One thing that is, kind of give you a more of a holistic view of what's going on. So this, this CIP item implements the pedestrian master plan. So the existing pedestrian master plan was approved, I don't know, about 10 years ago, probably, and it had a list of projects within the master plan that are priorities for the sidewalk money. And so we're at the end of that, we're, this year, we're out, this is the end of the projects in the master plan. So there's a project going on with our transportation section that is, put an RFP out. We have a consultant to update the pedestrian master plan. So that will get done this year, and it'll have a whole new set of sidewalk projects to prioritize. And then this, this line item, that $600,000 a year currently, will be used to implement that pedestrian master plan going forward. And with that, that's all I'm going to present now. If there's questions about other things, we can try to work through that. And then staff recommends approval, recommends that the 2025, 2034 CIP is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Nager?
I think those are very minor, and I noticed in the charts, I think it was correct, but on the bullets, page two, the Lyman Road from Bale to Tyler, it's northeast, not northwest. I imagine it's probably correct to wherever the council passed, so, but just in case.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cow?
I think, Madam Chair, Dan, since this has already been approved, I really wasn't going to ask you this question, but since you brought up the sidewalk matter, I wanted to get a little clarification of it. On the infill sidewalk, that's the $600,000 a year, and that's what it says on page 32 of the material you submitted, but on page, the page, the unnumbered page after page 139 notes that that's, that that ends in 2025, and nothing in the out-years. So you got two sets of numbers in, on the same subject, within the same document.
I got you. So I'm only, we're only showing probably one of these. I don't remember how many of these. There's a project sheet for each year for the infill sidewalk. So I, I don't know how many we put in here, but we didn't put them all in here. So I don't know if I'm answering the question, but there is a project sheet for '26, '27, '28 for the pedestrian master.
I'm a fan of sidewalks, and I think the situation we have in the city right now is, is not what it should be. And so I would, I would like to see, I would like to see more detail on the sidewalk. And on the sidewalk repair program, which is, that's the 50/50, right? I couldn't tell from the money, from the excerpts, the pages that you excerpted for us, what the city's appropriation was for the city's, city's half? Is there, is there a hard number in there for each year?
I'd have to see the sheet. Where is that roughly? Of course, it's the opposite way from where I started.
Dan, I'm okay with that, okay? If there's a number in there. I mean, the document itself is over 200 pages, and, so I guess, Madam Chair, my last question is kind of a process one. The pages that we received in the agenda document, were those staff's determination that those are the pages that we needed to, to look at in order to make a finding of compliance with the, with the comp plan?
Yeah, generally speaking, we, you know, we didn't necessarily include everything. It's kind of a snapshot of projects. It doesn't include the maintenance stuff, it's really more kind of new stuff, so, yeah.
Which I assume is where some of the sidewalk money is, right?
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Are there any other questions for staff? Do we need an actual motion for this, since it's already?
I can't answer that question. It's a hundred, it's $100,000.
A year?
Per year, $100,000 per year.
$100,000 per year in a city of this size? Well, that should solve the problem.
Okay. Did you have any other discussion going into that?
To me?
You can discuss your comments with the staff at another time. All right. Yeah, I think, I believe I need a motion. Correct? I need a motion, right?
Please, yes.
I need a motion for the CIP?
A motion to approve the CIP as already agreed.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Amanda, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
And Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
CIP passes.
All right, let's move on to discussion. Dan?
Commissioners, accessory dwelling units, this relates to a text amendment that we've been working on. I think some of you have probably seen this presentation, but this is the one we're going to put on the website, and some of you probably haven't seen this. I'll try to go through it a little bit quickly, but it kind of gives a pretty good, the reasons and the what, and all that, so. So accessory dwelling units fall under this idea of missing middle. Missing middle is, came from our citywide housing study, identified that we don't have enough missing middle type development in our city. And so this project to create more of the, kind of implement the missing middle is kind of the convolution, of our citywide housing market study from 2020, and our land use and growth management plan from 2014, which emphasized development in the city where we already have our infrastructure in place, those sorts of things. So what exactly is missing middle? So it's smaller attached housing, so ADUs, which we'll talk about tonight, duplexes, quads, townhomes, those sorts of things. Generally, generally, those are compatible with single-family neighborhoods in form and scale. They're missing because the market study identified we don't have enough of these in our market, and they're in the middle because they're in between single-family detached and mid-to-high-rise options. So anything roughly between two and 20 units is considered missing middle. So why address missing middle? It's really a marketability issue, so we talked already about, we just don't have enough of these in Topeka, and an affordability issue, which I'll talk more about later. Also, our single-family zone neighborhoods, which I will talk more about, are mismatched to provide life cycle, aging, and place choices. So someone wants to get into a unit that's less maintenance, those sorts of things. They generally can't do that in their own neighborhood here in Topeka. We just don't, we just have a lot of single-family zoning, and that's really it. Some other benefits of missing middle. So they add a supply of naturally occurring, occurring affordable housing. So smaller units, lower land cost, less parking, and oftentimes can be a supplemental income from a second unit. So someone maybe can't afford that house, but they could if they could get a little more income off of that ADU. Increases the pool of local developers and properties. You know, we're not going to bring in the big, the big developers to do these ADUs, so we're going to need the local folks to help us with that. And then growth at the neighborhood scale. So that example on the right is within one of our older neighborhoods, and that's an up-down duplex on that, in the middle of that block there. So there's actually a duplex there. So some housing trends here. So nationally, housing size has continued to grow. In the 1960s, the median square footage of a home was 1,500 square feet. In 2009, we're up to 2,200 square feet. A third of American households are made up of a single individual, and up to 85% of households will not include children by 2025. This is some permit information from 2021. The information probably isn't really that out of date. So new single-family permits, the average valuation in '21 was $240,000, and the average square footage was 2,100. So we're tracking nationally with that average square footage. New duplex permits, on the other hand, the average valuation per unit was $100,000, the average square footage 1,400. So we're getting cheaper, and we're getting smaller with this missing middle unit. Some other missing middle type permits, the average Some other missing middle type permits, the average valuation was $100,000 per unit and up to an square footage of 850. So the idea here is not everybody can afford or wants a single-family home. It's cheaper and you get something smaller if you look at missing middle. This shouldn't surprise anyone, but Topeka home prices have gone up, 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 and up over the last few years. So let's talk about zoning here in Topeka. So, you know, we've got zoning, I guess I don't have to explain that to this group, but so of our, all of our zoning residential is 73% of the city. So all of our zoning, 73% is residential. So we're just looking at residential zoning now. So residential, single-family is the R districts, the R1, the R2. Within just the residential zoning, 87% of our residential zoning is single-family. And the M's are the multifamily, it's about 12%. I just think this is interesting, this slide. This is actual development. So this isn't zoning, this is the type of unit. And we've got single-family on that bar, that's missing middle, high-density, and specialty. Specialty is probably more of the senior-type special, you know, senior housing. The first thing I want to point out is the newer parts of town, so District 7, 8, and 9, are probably more balanced than, are probably at a more reasonable balance of single-family and missing middle or high-density. You know, they're really, you know, 58%, 62%, 42% single-family, and then a lot more sort of missing middle type development.
Dan, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
What is an ideal mix in terms of housing type? Or is that a?
I, you know, there's probably something in the housing study, and I, I'm not positive. It was probably, you know, single-family being more like 60% or 65%. And I'm not sure about the rest of it. I think we have that in the housing study somewhere, though, those ideal mixes.
Thank you.
District 1 is the city's oldest part of town, and there's some reasons why that 30% is so high, and the single-family is lower. And then, you know, the next wave of development is really Districts 2, 3, 4, and 5 and 6. And most of those are really high, single-family. District 6 and District 2 are well over 80%. So, and we just don't have really much multifamily at all within kind of that central part, north and east part of the city. So let's talk about accessory dwelling units. So what is an ADU? So they're known as carriage houses, garlos, mother-in-law units. It's a smaller, independent residential dwelling. The key point here, located on the same lot as a standalone, single-family home. Our standards would allow attached and detached, and they can be converted portions of an existing home. So why ADUs? We talked about this a little bit already. So there's a potential to increase housing affordability, smaller unit, cheaper to build, and then also to provide more housing options, just have more options. So some of you might be familiar with Happy Days. Fonzie lived above the garage in that, on that TV show, so this is the Fonzie ADU. We have some ADU examples here in Topeka. There was a time in the past where ADUs were built, and they're probably okay. So we've got them. A little bit about our process, so we released a survey, an ADU survey, in the fall of '22. We've got about 230 responses. There were many written comments about that. We convened a work group, an ADU work group, met a couple times, and input from that work group actually changed the draft standards. Neighborhood meetings, so we met with the CAC, which is, includes representatives of the NIAs. College Hill and Tennessee Town, we met with them in March. Those were very well-attended meetings, and there were a lot of good questions. I was surprised at how well those went, actually. It's probably not the best way to say that. I just, I think what happens is we go through the presentation and it starts to, people start to get it, and it was just interesting. And then we had, we went to the Topeka Home Builders Meeting early, in early April, and that, or late April, that was very well-attended. There were a lot of people there, and there were some good questions about that as well. So let's look at the draft a little bit. So we'll have a definition. The key things here are, and we're changing the definition, that should be in the, hopefully that's clear in the stuff we provided. The key terms here are incidental, subordinate, located on the same lot. So we're talking about accessory dwelling units, incidental, subordinate. One change, a couple little changes to the matrix. So this is the use table in our zoning code. So if you want to know, you know, if your property's owned, single-family, R1, you want to know what uses you can do, you go to the use matrix, the use tables, and they'll tell you specifically what you can do. Or maybe not specifically, and you call Mike and ask him about it. So accessory dwelling units are currently permitted in Topeka on multifamily zoning, mixed-use zoning, and downtown. So you can do an ADU in Topeka. You can't do it in single-family. So that's what we're talking about, including ADUs in the single-family. And what we have here is an S/C. And what that means is, we've got this list of standards in the draft. That means if you can meet the standards, we can administratively approve your ADU. If there's something you don't want to do, can't do, don't want to do, then that potentially makes that a conditional use process, which is basically a rezoning process. So this is the types of ADUs that we're talking about. Attached, you know, above a garage, attached to the house in the basement, those sorts of things. One thing I will say that we did is look at other communities, too. So a lot of the communities around Topeka have ADUs on the books. And so we looked at those to see what we might want to do, what we don't want to do. And this isn't really a new idea. There's, you know, it's, we're not the first one to do ADUs. So just get into the standards, just the summary real quick. So first and foremost is a size limitation. We talk about these being accessory. So detached and integrated have size limitations. So detached, no more than 800 square feet or 50% of the floor area of the principal building. And then integrated, no more than 800 square feet and not exceed 80% of the area of the principal dwelling. So the idea here is if you're inside the house, it's probably less of a concern how, if it's 80% versus 50%. So the reasoning for the size limitations is to address the accessory nature of the unit relative to the size of the home. So we're trying to scale the unit to the size of the house, and again, maintaining that accessory nature. The big, the other big thing here is owner occupancy requirement. So essentially, either the ADU or the principal dwelling have to be occupied by an owner of record of the property. So this would not permit either of the units to be renter, or both of the units to be renter-occupied. I do think this standard caught some wind in a couple of the neighborhood meetings. I think this was appreciated. You know, there's a couple things in here that don't have to go the way they're going. This could possibly not be in there, the, maybe these need to be conditional use permits instead of administrative. You know, there's some things that can change, but I will say this one, you know, I think made some people feel a little more comfortable. Design, really in this, you know, it's not a lot of standards, but really, we're trying to make sure it fits the house, and then by extension, fit the neighborhood. So, you know, most of the houses in most neighborhoods all look not the same, but are kind of a similar design. So, and then the guidelines would include sort of exterior finish materials, architectural details, like roof pitch, trim, package, and kind of size of windows. Currently require, would require one off-street parking space. The thing that came up at the, one of the neighborhood meetings was this idea of neighborhood notification. So we got a comment about providing notification to neighborhoods when permits are received for ADUs. We have a separate document that's in the packet that has some options regarding that. I will say, we don't require neighborhood notification for any new permits, a new construction, rehab. We don't do that today. We don't currently require neighborhood notification. We do notify neighbors with STR, short-term rentals, after the permit's approved. So that's an administrative permit. We notify after it's been approved. And then there's a, you know, there's this, we have this 30-day demolition delay, which applies to, it's a Landmarks Commission policy that applies to certain historic properties. So that's, that has to do with demolition. We don't notify for any new permits currently.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
So on the notification, if someone wants to build a garage, let's say, do the neighbors get notified?
No.
So what would be the purpose of notifying them for an ADU? Because it seems like the same thing, it's just used a little differently.
I think it's, I think it is.
It's maybe a rhetorical question.
It's not. I just think they want to be, I just think the comment was related to just neighbors understanding what's going on around them, being included, being involved. Yeah.
Can you see any advantage? Can you see any advantage of telling them prior to from our, from this perspective? I mean, they can impact their decision, correct?
I think we would try to put guardrails on it to set a time period and to set what we need back from them. Because if it's an administrative permit, if that's the process we go under, I think we want to make sure everybody understands what we're asking them to do. I don't think we're getting into a situation where they're approving ADUs. I think it's more of a notification than provide comments. I think some of the downsides to, you know, people that try to do these, you know, there's a little time there and maybe some uncertainty, they're not sure what's going on, why do I have to wait? Because we try to clear permits, residential permits in five days. That's our, that's our performance measure for residential permits. So let's say we're at 10 days for an ADU. So that's just more time added onto the process.
Not specifically for ADUs, but what are the ways that people can find out this information as it relates to permitting? If I wanted to know who was building in my neighborhood.
I think we have a permit portal that shows where all the permits are being pulled.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Online, we provide that service.
So are you wanting some discussion from us about that, or?
Whatever you want to do. So let me, I don't think I talked about process. So this is really a discussion item right now. What we can do then, depending on how this goes, is come back in June with a public hearing. So, and what we would do between then and, between now and then, we would, we've got an email group of developers. We would email the packet, post it up. We haven't really posted this on the website yet because we weren't sure, you know, if everybody's cool with it. And so we can email that out to this developer, email to try to get some more input between now and the planning commission, and we'll try to do our best to get the word out to the greater Topeka about it. So whatever you want to give tonight is fine. We're coming back for a public hearing, and we can do it then, too.
Will this information be bilingual? Will it be in other languages, or the ability to convert to other languages?
I think we can do that, yeah.
Is there any other, Commissioner Cobb?
Thanks, Commissioner. Dan, I, Commissioner, I think, I've looked at this pretty closely. I wasn't on the group that was involved in it, but I think, I think the staff's idea of this two approaches of right and conditional use permit, I was, didn't like it all that much at the beginning, but I've come around. I thought your standards were too strict to begin with, but if you comply with those standards, then you're upright. You don't, on any of these, or virtually all of the substantive requirements, if you can't meet them, you try for a conditional use permit. I think that's really a very sound approach. So I think it's all, from my perspective, I think this is ready for public hearing at any time. Regarding the notification, I would, since you added some material in here, I think the points you made are very valid, that, you know, if you're, if I'm building a swimming pool or a garage or whatever in the backyard, I don't, I don't give notification, not required to give notification. We're designating these, certainly, you're going to get notification if it's a conditional use permit. That's understood.
For sure.
But otherwise, we're proposing to designate these as accessory uses, and there's no other accessory use in the book where notification is required.
That's true, yes.
So I'm fine with it as is, but, but, you know, if it was diplomatically or politically smart to provide notification to adjoining property owners after the permit has been approved administratively, there's really very little downside to that. It's a little bit of paperwork, but it doesn't carry with it any opportunity to, you know, object or, you know, it's just notification that this is going to be happening.
Right. That's, right, that's the process we follow with short-term rentals.
Yeah. So I think it's a good job, I'm sure.
All right.
I'm anxious to see it adopted.
Any other comments? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Oh, Dan, planning is.
Let's do some more.
Yes, one more time.
Okay. So the Planning Commission Incentives Committee, we provided a kind of a high-level update last month for some of the work that they're doing. We met again to kind of zoom in a little tighter on one path to go forward here, so formatting got a little squirrely here, but, so really, what's the idea then? So provide a residential density bonus incentive. Some percentage of affordable units could trigger more density within multifamilies. So Mike's going to run through the items that we talked to the committee about, just kind of briefly. And then the idea here is, if the, so after Mike's done, I think if the committee members want to weigh in, I think that's great. The idea here is that the commission would kind of greenlight some more work on this if they are cool with it, you know, some sort of public process to talk to stakeholders and get some feedback on some of this stuff before coming back to the commission again. I think the idea is if we do all that, we'll come back for another kind of discussion again before going forward with a public hearing. So Mike, do you want to?
Sure, I'll just turn on my mic first. Yeah, so one thing that we've observed already, prior to the Incentives Committee meeting, was that some of our density standards were pretty restrictive and didn't really reflect what's actually out there. So we looked at some different mixed-use projects, and they exceeded some of those standards. So the existing standards are, if you look at the density standard for M1, which is two-family dwelling district, existing standard is six units per acre, the M1A is 10, and the M2 multifamily is 15, and then the M3 is 30. So it doesn't really, I don't think there was a lot of thought put into those standards when they were written. I don't want to criticize anybody. That stuff like that happens when you put together a comprehensive zoning code amendment. And so we started looking at this. We also started just looking at other conditions, like lot sizes. So the whole idea here is remove obstacles to development that makes sense. And especially with affordability being an issue, land can be an issue, street frontage can be an issue, because, you know, every, the wider the lot, the more street frontage and the more public street you have to build if you're building a subdivision. And that's extremely expensive. That's probably one of the bigger barriers to. That's probably one of the bigger barriers to doing single-family residential development these days. So, what these standards that you can see on the screen do is, they, they align all that. If you look at the density, the density standard relates to the lot size standard, especially when you get up to M1. Okay? And what this is suggesting is that the density be 25, this is a maximum density. So, let's say someone has a multifamily project, what we do is we evaluate it, and we would look at the, how many units, the size of the property, and come up with a density standard. So 25 units per acre, in this case for M2 versus 15. So, and same with M3. So, one thing that was interested, one thing that the Incentives Committee was interested in doing is providing a, an incentive for doing affordable housing. So, included in, on one of the slides...
Is this what you want?
Yes. So, what this is saying is that you would be entitled a density increase of 40% for a minimum of 30% of the units being affordable housing. That needs to be defined. And it's defined here, applicable in M2 and M3 zoning districts. Affordable for this requirement is affordable households with an income of 80% of area median income. So, a couple of things about that. So, if you look at low-income housing tax credits, that program, a lot of the, we recently had a project that was awarded those tax credits, and we had one a few years ago. Typically, those will be awarded for projects that have as income standards for up to 80% of area median income. So, people earning an, an income that's, that's no more than 80% would qualify. Sometimes it's a mix, like 60 and 80, a mix of that. The more affordability is, so if it's 6% of the area median income, that's a more affordable, that's a more aggressive approach to affordability. So that's how it was defined here. I also think that this definition here relates to not just affordable, but workforce housing. And workforce housing, can you help me with the definition? It's, is it 61%?
60 to 80, right?
Yeah, so 60 to 80, or 60 to 120?
Hundred, yeah.
60 to 120% of area median income. So we can go back to the other slide. Where is that? Right there. Okay. So another thing, too, just to give you some point of reference here. So there's a, there's an apartment project that, this is kind of a poster child for some, to some extent. It was built probably in the 50s, maybe the 40s. It's two stories, probably two and a half. I think it has, has basement units, and it has a density of about 30-plus per acre. It's at, it's really close to Fuzzy's Tacos. It's Webster and 17th, I believe. And you can find numerous other examples. So density, some of these densities seem like they might be kind of high, but those projects are pretty compatible, they fit pretty well. Some of those really cool mid-century modern apartment buildings on, you know, Street.
Fillmore.
It's on Fillmore, yeah, Fillmore. Those are probably in the mid-20s, high-20s. So what this would do is if someone met this standard, there's no affordable housing requirement. If someone wants an incentive for affordable housing, they could get a 40% increase in the density standard, so they could do a denser project. Some of the other things that were discussed, one was parking. So, one thing that we're also working on is that we've drafted some changes to the parking code that would substantially reduce parking requirements for multifamily residential, especially if they're smaller units, like one-bedroom units. Some of the ideas were, let's be more aggressive and maybe not require parking, or even have more of an aggressive stance on reducing parking requirements if there's an affordable housing component. There might be a nexus there because affordable units, they might have people living there that don't drive cars, there's more of a tendency for that. But kind of to counter that, I will say that if there's not adequate parking for a project and people are parking on the streets in front of other people's houses, we get those phone calls, and that does happen sometimes. So, I think there is kind of a, you need to think about that if, if you want to take an aggressive approach to reducing parking, so. Hopefully I didn't drag on too long with that, but that's...
Thanks, Mike.
That's where we're at today.
Any of the committee want to say a few words about this?
Well, you know, the trick has been, like, like Dan said, that staff had already identified a number of dimensional requirements and lot coverage, so forth, requirements that were out of step, really needed to be, needed to be revised, and that's all good, that's great. Our, our challenge is, is to try to find additional incentives or additional changes to the, to the, to the development requirements that would be directed towards affordable or attainable housing. And, and we're close to that. I think we're going to have one more committee meeting where I think we can get finalized on where the committee is. We, that 80% AMI, I, I think is still a matter under discussion, whether that, whether there needs to be additional, maybe another layer of incentive that would be focused on households with the, even lower, you know, whether it's 60% or 30% even, the poor, very poor, as identified in the, in the housing study that was done a few years ago. So that's still, there's still some discussion to be had on that. But, you know, we're, we've got several tools to work with, and they've identified those. One, one other thing that I think we have to do a little bit more, do some work on, and will require the involvement of the city attorney's office, I'm sure, and that is, how do you make this stuff stick? You know, once you, once you put an incentive out there and a developer agrees to it, you know, is that good for one day, for one week, one month, or a set number of years? And cities deal with this all the time, and they, they have solutions, they have agreements that are entered into. But I think when we go out and talk to stakeholders, particularly the development community, they're going to ask, okay, this is great, you know, but if I'm going to put in, develop some housing for, some affordable or attainable housing, what, what else do I have to do besides just take the bonus? You know, well, you're making a commitment, and it's, it's a question of, of how lengthy that commitment is, and, and trying to strike that balance where you're not discouraging somebody from, from going forward. This is all incentives, it's all positive, so I would imagine, I would have, have to believe that, meeting with stakeholders, that everybody's going to be either real pleased or pleased with, with what's being proposed, so.
I just wanted a few comments if I can. I actually really enjoyed the conversation that we've been having on the committee, because I think they've been thoughtful about affordable housing on a holistic approach, taking into account the perspective of what does it look like for nonprofit and the demographic they provide for, but also when you're thinking about a for-profit developer, what's the threshold of how much density we can have before it's just not financially feasible for them to develop? We want to create a proper mix to make sure that we're actually getting units created versus having an incentive out there and nobody's building because it's, it doesn't make sense for the cost of the project. So I feel like there's a lot of great holistic conversations around housing, and how do we make that more affordable, whether is it more density, is it in the parking? And so I think this next meeting, along with the meeting with the stakeholders, I think are going to be really informative to just bring together those final pieces. Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify through some questions to staff, like what we are not doing here. So if there's a developer and they want to do something in my neighborhood, and they want to build higher than what's available now, can they build higher?
Increasing height would require a variance.
So...
So they can't do, no, they can't do that.
No, they can't.
They'd have to rezone it, either, or they, they either request a variance, which will go to the board of zoning appeals, or they would have to rezone the property.
But it'd be something beyond these amendments.
Yes.
Yes. If, if I'm a developer and I want to build 80 parking spots per apartment, I could do that if I wanted. This would not stop me from doing that.
Yes, this is not, this is not place a maximum on parking spaces.
And if...
We don't have parking maximums.
If I own a single-family home and I enjoy living in my single-family home, this will not force me to transfer it into a duplex. This will not force any of my neighbors to change it into a duplex or something like that.
Absolutely correct.
Thanks.
This does not require you to do any of those things.
So, just, if, I, I want people to understand that stuff that we are not doing here. We are looking for opportunities, like you mentioned, like those multiple buildings that are beautiful homes near the Dairy Queen and the Fuzzy's Tacos, like those are the kinds of things that we have in mind, not huge developments, not really changing character of neighborhoods.
So, maintaining, I did, kind of speaking toward that, right now, you seem to be focusing on building, like building from scratch. Is there, do you anticipate anything about taking an existing building and doing something to it to help convert it to something more dense?
I don't know why this wouldn't necessarily apply to that as well.
Okay.
You know, because you're going to have a max density, you know, with whatever zoning that building's in, and if there's a way to divide those units, maybe they're big enough to split them all in half, you're going to run into a density problem. So, yeah, I think this could apply in certain cases to some of that as well.
Right. If I have a, if I have a 12-unit apartment complex right now, you know, I'm going to be able, with the proposed changes here, I'll be able to add, should I choose to, I can add additional units, whether they're affordable or not. Again, what we're trying to do is if I find want to, if I want the extra incentive, you know, that would allow me to, additional units to be constructed, then I'm going to set aside some of those for, as, as, whatever is going to qualify for, for affordable. But, but yeah, I would, I would imagine that we'll have as much existing, I mean, hopefully something will happen from all of this, but I think it's just as likely there'll be renovation of existing properties as much or more than new, new development.
And just refresh my memory, would the density include residential zoning, or was it just the M1, that, the M districts that we were discussing?
We only have density standards for the M districts.
Yeah, so it wouldn't affect anybody in a residential district?
Well, I wasn't thinking of a residential district. Actually, I was thinking of a commercial converting to residential, or a bill, I can think of a building right now that's empty, that's already sectioned off into units. Could that, could a person who is interested in developing that into housing of some sort be able to take advantage of this?
And we have had some discussions about that, about the existing commercial properties, other places around the country have converted schools, churches, all sorts of institutional buildings converted.
It happens a lot in the preservation world. I guess that's what I'm thinking of, so. Well, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I feel like you guys have a good mix of skills on the committee at this point in time. I'm also hoping that, that you as commissioners will take more of a lead role, so I would hope, I would like to offer Commissioner Cobb the, to be the chairperson of that committee if the other commissioners on it don't have a problem with that. I think he'd be great...
Did he say you did or didn't have objection?
Liaison to work with staff. I think he's a great liaison to work with staff because of his knowledge and background anyway. And that way, he can facilitate conversations maybe outside of meetings as well as hope direct them within the meetings.
I'd be glad to, to take on that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a one, another question. So, on the conversation of the economics of it, so, you know, there's a density that triggers it to be feasible. And so, you know, this is really great, kind of the updated numbers and everything, but is there any data to suggest at what point it becomes feasible? And, and maybe the question is, is, could you look towards other municipalities or, you know, government cities in the area or other states adjoining where they've been able to bring in developers because the density was this? And so, just to back up, making sure that these densities are the right densities?
Yeah, I'll chime in really quick. I think that's part of our conversations that we're going to be having when we break out and talk with different developers and contractors, because they'll have sample proformas that we're hoping that we can put against this, especially if we utilize developments that are being proposed right now for the city, because the cost varies so much on the type of structure or how many units are being built. But yes, definitely, there's a fine line there, and we're trying to figure that out, because we want it to be a win-win.
Yeah.
But the bulk of the changes, the text amendments we've been talking about, it's all, I don't want to say it's all gravy, but it is all gravy. I mean, you know, it's easier to develop, it's, you're liberalizing the standards more. The issue is whether or not we can find that spot where folks will be, developers will be willing to construct affordable units, you know, to take that extra step, you know, where the incentives are, are strong enough that it makes economic sense for them to do that. There's economic benefit. But, but everybody prospers under the, under the regulations that were the changes we're proposing here. It's, it's all positive for the development community.
So we'll hear from this committee again when?
Probably in July.
In July? All right. Is there, wow, let's see, we're at public comment. Was there any?
No public comment.
Communications to the commission? Are there any?
Well, I should probably let Dan go first. Mine's more just a housekeeping reminder. Amanda kindly reminded me that we will have our June Planning Commission meeting here in council chambers, but then after that, there's renovations that'll be taking place here, so it'll be on your calendar invites, but remember, we'll be on the first floor of the Holiday Building, so you don't end up lost.
There will be a June meeting, ADUs and some other stuff, some zoning stuff also, but we'll definitely be meeting in June. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah?
Just real quick, I know the Riverfront Authority is having their open house tomorrow night, right? And, you know, you're on, you're involved in that directly, right? So, I, I know that they have proposed land uses, they're going to be talking about land uses. I don't, I just, one quick question is, are they, do they acknowledge or they're aware that, that there is existing zoning and there is a downtown master plan? So that, that's being taken into account as they go forward on their land use pieces?
Yeah. My, my opinion, my opinion, I'll state that, is that I believe Bolton and Meek had came in and really put together, that's the consultant that they're working with, had put together some visual renderings and concepts. So we're meeting city staff, utilities, public works, and planning. It's meeting with the consultant tomorrow morning to, to, to help address any concerns that there might be about existing zoning, to make sure they're aware. But yeah, they're familiar with the downtown master plan that Dan and team worked diligently to complete. So, yeah, the open house will be tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Great Overland Station if anybody wants to, to join in and listen, but I know that there'll be probably a few sessions of those, where they'll be taking in stakeholder feedback and input on some of the initial designs.
Thanks, thank you.
I just wanted to commend you, everyone, all your work on the research discussion, and I know we had a lot of things that we threw out, and I think you guys responded really well and provided a lot of good information. And I know, you know, as I'm making those comments a month ago, I know you guys are, you know, vanished a lot of stuff, but I just appreciate you guys doing that, and I think it's, it's worthy cause to, to let people's voices be heard, and I think we have a solution as a result.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Agreed, thank you. We're adjourned. I didn't hit...